Good evening. It's March 20, 2018. I'd like to welcome you all to this evening's regular meeting of the Reinbeck Central School District Board of Education. I'd like to call this meeting to order. May I have a motion for approval of the minutes of the February 27 regular meeting?
So moved.
Second. Any discussion, amendments, changes? All those in favor? That motion passes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the March 10, 2018 board work session?
So moved.
Second. Any amendments, discussion? All those in favor? That is six in favor. I am delighted to see a very large crowd before me this evening, and we begin our meetings with time for public comment. Allow me just to share with the large group of people who may have not attended a board meeting in the past that when you come forward to speak, please tell us your full name and where you live, and please also remember that we do not make comments about persons within the district, and also if you have interest in speaking to the question of safety, which is on our agenda for today, we ask that you exercise common sense in terms of discussion of particulars with regard to plans and share with us the sentiment, the general sentiment that is motivating your position. So, is there anyone who wishes to make public comment?
Hi, how are you? My name is Chantel Collins. I live in the village of Reinbeck, raise my children here, and teach at the elementary school. I appreciate the opportunity to speak tonight about school safety, a subject that concerns me, many parents and staff in our district. I grew up in Reinbeck and can recall practicing the air raid drills, where we would stand in the hall with one hand over our head and one over our neck, in case the communist country is ever attacked. Looking back, my friends and I used to laugh at the futility of it, and lately I'm beginning to feel that way again. Nineteen years ago was Columbine. I thought it was a one-off, a freakish, awful event that would never happen again, but it did again and again and again around the country. And then five years ago came Sandy Hook, where 20 children and six adults died. And we asked, "How? How can this happen? Who could do it?" But now we see this happening on a regular basis. I wrote this 10 days ago, where there had been 15 school shootings since January 1st, and that number is now at 17. And the shock seems to last for a shorter period of time, and we all move on because that's how we live now. I don't want to carry a weapon. I don't want to teach in a fortress, and I don't believe that this will happen at CLS. But I do believe that it can. We all do what we can to keep our children safe. We use car seats when they're little. We put on outlet covers, put them in helmets and shin guards. We don't teach them not to talk to strangers. Don't smoke, don't test, and drive, and so on and so on. But we're educators, we're not soldiers, and our students need to know that the school board has their safety as a priority and has an agenda, a timetable, and initiative which will be implemented, not more talk and meetings which sometimes delay action. I know that all of you care about our children. I know we all do. I know that we can do better. So please, not only seriously consider ideas that have been thoughtfully put before you, but act on them promptly. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Sarah Rosenball. I have two children at Chancellor, and I just wanted to speak to the budget. I wanted to thank you all. I know it's a really difficult process trying to make these cuts, and I guess as a person who's relatively new to this district, one of the things that I'm finding a hard time understanding is what the strategy is behind the cuts and kind of what -- I know there is a long-range planning committee. I'm really interested in what's happening with that. And I guess what I'm asking for is maybe some active transparency from the board regarding how you're strategically looking at what areas might be cut, because as a parent, I'm left feeling lacking, not understanding, and not wanting to come up here and reactively speak about each specific thing that you're talking to, but more wanting to understand the greater picture. So, I don't know exactly what that looks like. I also would like to suggest, I guess, that the long-range planning committee maybe be something that's bigger and involves community members, like parents and teachers, and maybe that's a way to start pushing information about what that committee is looking at out into the community so that people understand more deeply. So.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Barbara Dooley. I work at Chancellor. I live in Reinbeck. I'm one of the greeters at Chancellor, and I spend three and a half hours a day sitting up in the front. And I feel like I watch everybody that comes. There was a parent that -- there was a couple that pulled up one day. They were from New Jersey. They backed in their car, because I watch. So I went into Rachel and I said, "Do we have any grandparents picking up children today?" Because I didn't know who they were. And sure enough, I figured they were grandparents. They backed in, they get there half an hour before, and that's what it was. But I want more protection. I think we deserve it. I feel like I'm sitting in that glass three and a half hours a day. I want a buzzer underneath. Something has to change. It's never going to be the way we know it. We have to do something more to protect our schools. It just happened again today. It happened again today. If anybody wants to trade places with me, I sit there. I feel like I know everybody that comes in, but when I don't know somebody, I'll kind of say to somebody else, "Do you know who that is?" Because I'm afraid now. Afraid for myself, and I'm afraid for the kids, because we shouldn't have to live like this. And the only way we can do it is you guys have to protect us. And every year in your budget, it has to come up. Things have to change in the school every single year to watch this. And you take care of all of us that work there. But I'm here because I feel that three and a half hours a day, I sit there and I am a sitting duck, sitting there. And I try to protect our kids, but you guys need to change it. It's never going to be the way when we went to school. It's entirely different, and you have to take care of our children. I mean, how do you live? How would you live with yourself if something happened here? And we have our own crazies. Every school does. And to say, "We never -- it'll never happen here," I don't believe that either. I will never say that because we don't. Thank you very much.
My name is Megan Kraft. I'm a teacher at Chancellor. I live here in Reinbeck. I'm here to speak tonight about safety in our schools. It is no secret that we're faced with increasing safety concerns regarding active shooter situations specifically. We've seen the national headlines, and we've cried for the students and teachers who have lost their lives in these horrific acts. We've also seen in local news that districts nearby and surrounding areas have dealt with threats mirroring such acts, and we too could face similar threats or worse, and we must be prepared. Preparedness makes all the difference. When faced with an active shooter situation, there is no time for thought. You have but a fraction of a second to do something. I know this because I have been in that situation before, in the Hudson Mall 13 years ago. Even speaking about it now causes adrenaline to pump through my body and makes me feel sick to my stomach. When you hear gunshots or you see a threatening individual coming your way, you're completely at the mercy of your body's fight or fight reaction. And I would do anything within my power to prevent my students and colleagues from overhealing that terror. That is why I'm standing here now. My hope is that the concerns of the faculty, staff, and parents' voice tonight will encourage some immediate changes in our praise to school security. We must be proactive and preparing for the worst while hoping we will never have to face an event such as this. I ask you this: If you knew that this would happen in Reinbeck, what preparedness actions, shorter closing school, as neighboring districts have had to do, would you take to ensure the safety of the students and staff? After the Hudson Mall shooting, people tried to ease my anxiety by saying the chances of it happening again were equal to that of getting struck by lightning. My answer to them is that I was already struck once, and lightning can strike anywhere, anytime. It can strike in Reinbeck. And we cannot afford to sit idly by and wait to be reactive. If we do, that precious lives could be lost. I think it is safe to say that nobody in this room would be willing to gamble with the lives of our students. To close statement from our district's core values, students and staff need a healthy and safe environment, and we look to you for support in ensuring the safety of our students and ourselves. These trying times require us to reevaluate our current building security and take additional preventative actions due to the concerns we now face. I appreciate all that you do to ensure that Reinbeck continues to be a wonderful place to teach and learn, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you very much. If anyone else wishes to speak during public comment? A lot of students here today. Anyone want to say something? The senior class? Ah, Ms. Wheeler! You come too.
I'm Sarah Wheeler. I'm a community member, parent of two kids in the district, and this year I'm English shared. So I'm going to speak from that, with that hat on today, just very briefly. I think I've communicated some of the details, some of the concerns that my colleagues and I have, and in light of the other remarks, they may seem very small. So please, you know, understand that this is maybe, you know, there's a lack of segue there. But one of the cuts that has been proposed or planned is sort of a silent one. It's breakage, I think was Mr. Vennell's term for it. And it's sort of a natural reduction because of the retirement in BMS. So when the retirement occurs, it's a good opportunity to save some money by not hiring another teacher to fill this spot. But I think it's important for the community to know the specific impact it will have on high school English in particular. Our numbers don't shrink for a few years, right? Because it's slowly moving, you know, our demographics have shifted, and they're coming from Chancellor. Chancellor will experience it first, BMS, and then the high school. So our numbers don't go down significantly at all next year, but we're looking at moving from five teachers to four teachers. And that, you can look at it a few different ways, but we're going to be, you know, faced with trying to offer all the things that we want to offer in our school with about five fewer sections. And some of those sections are not one-credit courses. They may be electives or academic support. And the value of both of those things may not add up, you know, it may not be as quantifiable as a single credit-bearing course. But electives are where a lot of things happen. You can build school climate and culture. You can teach empathy. You can also provide more opportunities for interaction with the community. Our journalism courses had a lot of success, kind of, you know, building students' voice, their feeling of involvement. And we look forward to, I think, you know, moving forward with what we've been given since I've been here, which is incredible support from the board, from Dr. Davenport, from Barbara Krebs, to build and enhance, to really offer a robust program. And it saddens me that next year we could face the following. We could face no electives in English, just four courses. We could face maybe offering one elective, but then we would have class sizes in -- 10th grade is the biggest one. 10th grade regents level would go up to 30 in a couple of sections. We do not have anywhere that I know of in the building technology to support that number. We have 26 computers and parts. We have 26 desktops in the computer lab. So I don't know how -- I don't think that's Reinbeck. I don't think Reinbeck ever planned for that. So I advise us to really consider that sort of passive -- we didn't, you know, no one made a cut or no one wants any of these, you know, things that happen, but it is happening. And the Tier One and Tier Two don't really, you don't see it there, but it kind of happened before that. So I think either hiring just on a temporary basis, a part-time position, maybe a .4, although a cost, I understand, if we can, you know, weigh that as part of our collaborative decision-making, I think it would be smart. It seems very short-sighted to cut our program. When the demographics are, you know, appropriate, we can offer it all again, you know, maintaining our class sizes at a reasonable level, offering the electives that our students want and wish to have, and maybe their colleges want to see, you know, to offer that kind of variety, and the academic support. If we, ELA teachers cannot offer academic support to our at-list students, we're talking about regents grades, talking about, you know, the kids who need reteaching, not just homework help, but, you know, really content support. And literacy is, we all know, pretty important, our writing skills for our students' futures, whether they're going to college or going to the workplace. I can't think of anything more important. So just, these remarks are in light of, you know, the support that we've gotten from you, from the district, and I know, you know, I feel very lucky to be, to wear all my hats here, and I thank you for listening, and if there are any questions, just, I can give you more detailed something in writing. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Mr. Selden? Approach the microphone. I was going to say it's going to be a long wait for anyone until the next public comment moment, so take advantage.
I'll be fast. I have a cold. I need to get out of here before I get too upset.
All right. Thank you. Identify yourself and go back.
My name is Frank Selden. I have two kids in sixth grade, and we moved to Reinbeck when they were babies. So we moved here for the school district. And I'm going to take the other comments that people have been making on the budget issues and turn it around a little bit. I'm sick of hearing about cuts. We spend, I don't know the exact number, $27,000, $28,000 per student in this district. That's a very high number. We need to be figuring out how to give our kids more. We're sinking. I mentioned at the meeting, and Joe, I apologize, I looked it up because I didn't have the number. We came up, we were number 1,109 in the U.S. News 2017 school survey. Best metric in the world? Probably not, but it is one, right? For lack of a better one. That's well down from what it had been, I know, when we looked at the school district back seven, eight years ago. I looked up some other data. There's lots of other data out there or whatever. We're not going forwards. If anything, we're going backwards as a district in quality of education that we're delivering to the kids. There's a lot of money to be spent here. The enrollment is shrinking. That's an opportunity to get better. I appreciate the tax cap, whatever it is, 2.5% this year or something, but when you add that to the enrollment change, we have an opportunity to spend 4%, 5% more money per student, and yet we're sitting here talking about cuts. We need to figure out where is this going wrong? Where are we spending this money? How do we need to rethink this so that we get more money or more resources or better resources or smarter resources or whatever the mechanism may be aimed at the students? Because at the end of the day, that's what we're all here for. We're all here for our kids to get a great education. How do they get that? We need to rethink it all. There's lots of creative stuff going on all over the country. We need to figure out how to employ some of it. So if it were me, I want to stop talking about cuts. Every year I come to these budget meetings, and we, you guys, go through this process, and we're $200,000 short, and you spent a half an hour at the meeting debating whether we need 18 days of guidance counselors or 20 days of guidance counselors, and I'm sitting there going, "Why are we even having this discussion?" Right? Where's the discussion on how we get better? And that's the discussion I don't see anywhere. I've read the notes from the long-range planning. I didn't see a lot of that in that discussion. Now, maybe there's other stuff that went on, and I appreciate that minutes don't always capture the essence of what went on in some of those meetings, but that's all I have. Should there be a public forum on it? How do we turn this whole discussion around to a positive instead of trying to fight a negative? So that's my comment. I have some ideas. I'm happy to share them at some moment in time, but there's other people who want to talk, and you don't want to hear me for the next 45 minutes. So I'll leave it at that.
Thank you very much. Thank you for your comments.
I'm not getting anybody else's in.
Be well.
Thank you.
Other comments? There will be another opportunity for those who remain later in the meeting to make public comment, but I want to be sure. I can't see everyone in the group, so anyone back there? Okay, so we're going to move on then to our reports and discussions, beginning with our 2018-19 budget development update with Tom Burnett.
Okay, I went through and made some changes to create a fourth draft, which I have at your desk or in front of you. I would go to the budget development process, like starts with all the changes, and just give you an idea of what I was able to take out of the budget and to reduce. So if we go to the third page, there's a couple of things that we took out of the budget. The salary for the curriculum council of $30,000. Some of this stuff we went -- the next part of it is things that we discussed last Sat -- not this past -- no, Saturday before at the work session. But the salary for the teacher aides, that's converting a retiring teacher aide to a three and three-quarter hour teacher aide. So there's savings in the salary plus the benefits. Under tuition, other, $88,000 reduction in special ed cost. BOSI services, a reduction of $21,000. This was due to the number of students who'll be attending the Career and Technical Institute at BOSI, so we reduced it by two slots. The employee retirement system, social security, and union welfare benefits are associated with the teacher aide, the benefits associated with that. And under the health insurance, this is partly with the teacher aide also, but the DIHC set the rates at 6.9% overall, but to us it was actually a 7% just because how we have more actives than retirees. So actives were up 7.1%, while retirees were 6.7% or something like that. So overall, it's a 7% to us, which enabled us to reduce the budget by $78,000. Altogether, this is $230,900 being reduced from the budget. And if we go over to the next page, give you an idea, the budget, the budget is 2.57. The current proposed tax increase is 3.68%, and we can only have 2.51. So that gives us a difference right now of 325, a little over $325,000. So that's the number we're looking at right now. We've got no state aid updates, so I can't see any new revenues coming in, but whatever it is, it won't be tremendous. So that still gives us with a pretty healthy gap there. What I did though is I did print out for you again the Tier One and Tier Two options. And this is just a big if. If we did use all of Tier One, the $227,000 from the $325,000 difference, that would leave us with a $98,000 gap, then that would need to come from options on Tier Two.
Or other items.
Or other items that, you know, may occur between now and when we adopt the budget. And remember, we're just adopting a number. Things do happen after the budget is set, and if, you can always make adjustments afterwards, but we're just, remember, the public is voting on a dollar amount, not exactly where everything is being spent, and needs change, as we saw this past year with having to hire health aides and teacher aides for students who moved into the district that were unknowing going into the budget process when we ended up. So still have some work cut out for us, but I don't know, where would you like the discussion to go or thoughts?
Questions, comments?
Quick question. The deletions for, from the third draft, do not include the retirement that we're voting on later, or do they?
They do not.
They do not.
They do not. But there is very, and sometimes no breakage when any member retires, because you're bringing on, whatever the salary difference is, it usually gets eaten up by the health insurance. So you might have a savings of $20,000 in the salary, but I'm picking up a new health insurance contract that's going to cost me $23,000. So in the end, it could actually end up costing us a little bit more. But that has not been factored into this at all.
We talked about administrators and faculty working together to try to brainstorm around these ideas so that we can make appropriate and reasoned cuts. Have those kinds of meetings begun? Can you tell us where we are with that process? Are we going to be getting suggestions, considerations from?
We have, we've asked our building administrators to work with members of the staff. They report to me that some of that has already been going on. We've asked them to continue to provide us with any updated information, you know, if any creative ideas come out of those conversations, to let us, to let us know so we can make adjustments to any of these documents that we've been looking at for the last several weeks. We spent a good chunk of time with Dr. Davenport and Mr. Chemnitzer just a little earlier today, having some of those discussions. We've not had an opportunity. As most of you know, I haven't been here in an active capacity for the last several days, so I anticipate we'll have a similar discussion with Principal King, and whatever we come up with, we'll be bringing to you in subsequent iterations of these documents till we get to where we hope to be able to get, which is below that tax levy cap. And I would have to say that I'd love to be able to minimize the impact of the tax levy cap, but the tax levy cap is, at least for us around this table, a reality. We don't have the option of ignoring, well, we did, we could. We could go out for another tax levy cap override. I heard that mentioned at one of the coffees over at Chancellor. I haven't heard anything about that since that time, but until the board gives us a direction otherwise, our charge is to bring you ideas to get that budget down to the tax levy cap. So if you want us to take a different tack, let us know, but that's the, that's the road we're pursuing until we're directed otherwise. That's a reality. We can say whatever we want about the things we want for our kids and how we should be building and adding and providing more services, but whatever we do, we have to do within the context of the tax levy cap. It's law in New York State. It's law in New York State. So, it has a very constricting effect on what we can do for our kids. That's just the reality, but I know you guys know this because you've been dealing with it for the last seven years, about the same amount of time that Frank was giving us as the context, coincidentally enough. So, anyway, I just need to put that out there.
Well, can I speak to your comment about working together with people who are directly impacted by proposed cuts? We have actually, as a board, been receiving many communications from parents, from teachers, staff, people who work in the school and who have come forward and are, we hope, continuing to come forward with suggestions, raising questions, asking us to think about allocation of resources and expenses in ways that we may not have thought about until that moment. And I really want to emphasize, as you have said, Joe, that we have here in front of us a set of potential ways to close that gap. We are continuing to look at those possible ways to close the gap, and we are interested in hearing about other good ideas as this process unfolds, which is to say, if our building principals and administrators are working with teachers, to look carefully at how the curriculum that has been the object of great labor and care by our teachers can continue to be delivered in meaningful ways, to certainly retain its integrity, if not grow stronger, of course, that's always our goal. But that very much, I think, is the spirit of this, of this board in terms of wanting that kind of input from members of the community. So, since there are so many people here, I very much want to describe this process as in motion and to invite really any kind of input that you constructively can offer to us as we go about our work. Yes, we are constrained by New York State law and by the tax gap, but the ways in which we make the decisions about how to meet those obligations very much can and should be informed by your knowledge, your experience. And we hope to hear from many of you. Other questions, comments? Okay. Shall we move on to the school safety report?
Yeah. My intent in putting this on tonight's agenda was to bring the board up to speed as to what's been going on in at least partial support of the people who've spoken tonight to the, to the issue of school safety. So, the board is aware, the Chancellor, school safety team was finally able to meet this past Friday. I think those, that meeting had been canceled at least twice because of, as you know why, because of the weather that we've been experiencing this month. The middle school, high school safety team is scheduled to meet this Thursday. Their meeting has been canceled at least twice due to, due to weather-related issues. And I did receive notes of the meeting from Friday's Chancellor School Safety Team meeting just this afternoon, so I've got to digest that and feedback to Principal King to get some clarification on some of the points there, and I'll share that with you as members of the board. I did meet with Sergeant Pete Dunn on Monday, March 12th, and we talked about a number of issues regarding school safety. We did discuss the idea of additional SRO coverage and cost. It is not without cost. The SRO coverage that we have currently is not a free service provided by the Rhinebeck Police Department to our school district. So, if we wanted to expand that, there are possibilities there. Pete and I talked about them when we met on the 12th at one of the board coffees. One of the people at the coffee brought up, I don't recall whether she brought it up just to me or whether it came out in the discussions, but there was a, or maybe it was a gentleman I remember, but there was a suggestion that we inquire of our local police department, that the Rhinebeck Police Department be a presence at both of our schools, both at arrival time and at dismissal time, not in the school necessarily, but on campus. I asked Pete about that, and he said he thought it was a good idea and that they would, they would do that. Again, I've been out of the district for a lot of the time since then, so I've not been standing at the, at the bottom of the hill with a, you know, with a, with a check sheet to see what days they had been or have not been here, so I couldn't sit here and tell you that they have implemented that. But he told me that that was an idea that they, he thought they would be able to do, provide, of course, if they have an emergency call at that time, then they would have to leave site and attend to that emergency. So, I'm, you know, looking forward to that becoming a part of their kind of daily routing routine in the morning and the afternoon at each of our school buildings. I'll follow up with Pete next time I talk to him to find out if and how that's working. Maybe some of you have noticed an increased presence, maybe you haven't. I don't know. I haven't, I haven't physically been here since shortly after that meeting.
Number of times in the morning.
That's good. A number of things that, I just wanted to mention, a number of things that have been done is that we have, based on some conversations that we had earlier this year, not just within the past month, this was in play prior to, prior to February 14th. We have installed interior hallway cameras in both the middle school, high school building and the Chancellor, and those viewing of, of those cameras by emergency personnel during a crisis from outside of the building is, is a capability that we, we have to provide to them, and I mentioned that to Pete when I met with him on, on March 12th, so they're aware of that, that capability. We have started locking all entrance doors at, at both schools from the evening through the arrival of the greeter in the morning and then through the school day. There's obviously a piece of that that we are continuing to work on but have not, have not implemented, implemented anything as of this moment. We, let's see, what else? Some people have asked about the idea of having a camera and microphone-enabled device at each entrance so our greeters can see who is there before they, they let them in and can have a conversation with them to determine who they are and what their business is in the school. That was approved last December as part of the capital project that the community approved. The entire plan, as the board is well aware, is, is in Albany waiting to be approved. We've talked to our architects and construction managers and asked them to be sure that that is, that is something that they schedule for the start of construction here this summer, not to wait until the second year of the project. So, we've asked them to, to fast-track that to the extent that they're able to do. Also, part of the capital project is a, a new updated key card system that will be able to provide access to all members of our staff who have a, a key card, and they should be available to all members of our staff when that is, when that is implemented. Again, we've asked our architects and construction managers to fast-track that as well and to, to make plans to get that work done this summer. In terms of, of additional monies for items that may come out of the, the discussions of the school safety teams, there is, there is a sum of money, though not a huge sum of money, in the Smart Schools Bond Act that can be used for a variety of things. Technology is one of those things. School safety-related items is another one of those things. My understanding is that during discussions earlier this year, $20,000 was put aside specifically for school safety items. I don't believe that number is a, is a final cast-in-stone number, so we'll see what, what ideas come from the school safety teams, and that can be modified. Unfortunately, it's a grant, so you have to apply for the money and get it approved before you can spend the money and get reimbursed, but that is, is an option for the school district to look into. You can't use that money for things like hiring more people or security people or SROs. I mean, you just can't pay for those. They're looking for some kind of--
Tangible.
--enhancement to, to the physical plant or software or whatever. So, we need to look at those kinds of things, know where to access those, those monies. So, that's, that's really where we're, we're at up to this day. I hope to have access to a report from this Thursday's school safety team at the middle school, high school, and then we'll, we'll start having discussions about where we go from here.
Okay.
So, we've done some things, certainly not everything that can be done, and we'll do as much as we can with the resources that we can make available to, to address those things.
Questions?
Well, I'm so happy with the quick turnaround on as many things as we're able to do so far. Sam, like your meeting with Pete Dunn was productive, and I'm glad they were able to help. I would maybe encourage you, maybe reach out to our other agencies, the state police and the sheriff, and see if there's anything they're able to offer to us or coordinate with them as well.
Yeah, certainly next step for us.
Other questions?
The first one is with the Rhinebeck Police showing up in the morning and afternoon, is that a charge?
Yes. Well, basically, what we did was ask them to, to route their, their daily routine around being at both buildings, both at arrival time in the morning and dismissal time in the afternoon, so that's, that's at no cost to the school district.
So, the monitors that you were talking about, for people to buzz in, or no, 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 the monitors of, from the cameras, is it, is, where are they, can you even say, are they--
They're, they're up in the web, right? So, you can look at another computer--
So, once a thing's going on, like, say, there's a camera up and something's going on--
Correct.
Is there a protocol for who is going to then alert the outside world to look at the monitors to see what's going on?
First responders who might come on the scene in the event of an emergency or even a call to see what's going on, can, we can give them access and would give them access to, to those cameras to see what's going on inside the building.
And who's watching them inside the building?
Nobody is watching them inside the building. They are not, that's what Tom just said. We don't have somebody sitting there looking at up and down, up and down the hallways. And if, for that matter, they could stand up themselves and look down the hallway, that doesn't help a first responder who wants to know what's going on inside that building in the event of an emergency. They can have that access, as Steve mentioned, they can access it via the web.
And is there, so the buzzers for the greeters that you were talking about--
That's correct.
Is there, was there discussion of the greeters having some kind of a list for people who are expected for the day?
Not currently, but that is a suggestion that we have received from the staff, that no one's allowed in the building unless they have a prior appointment. I know at my son's school, you can't go in the building without an appointment, so that greeter, if you're not on that list, they tell you to go back home, give a call to the school district, make an appointment, and come back. If you're not on the list to be there that day, they don't want to know. If you're there to pick up your sick child, a nurse will call down and say, so-and-so is coming to pick up somebody.
And they get on the list.
But no one gets through that front door without having an appointment to see a principal, to see a guidance counselor, to see a teacher. They're not allowed through the door unless you're, you're on that list.
And do you feel that we should wrap into, or have a temporary type of safety committee? Or is that one too many committees? Or should it be wrapped up in with the facilities? That, you know, because this seems like there's a lot of spokes in this wheel, and so maybe having, or is it, I know we meet so much already.
We do.
You said it.
Facilities meeting Thursday.
I mean, is it something that maybe the facilities committee can take on as just like a sideline project for a little--
Well, my, my thought is, as opposed to setting up another committee, that many of the things we're, we would be talking about are going to have an nexus with, with facilities. Some of the things I mentioned tonight are already within the purview of the facilities committee, so that would, would make a certain amount of sense. And they won't have much to do over the next year or two while we have this capital project going, so, no, I'm kidding, they'll have a lot to do. But part of what they'll do will be dealing with those aspects of the capital project as well, so it seems like a natural, a natural fit. That would really be up to the committee to discuss whether they feel, I'm not saying here tonight, but whether they feel they can, should, you know, take on that additional responsibility. It seems like a good fit.
We meet on Thursday, so we--
Yeah, we do.
If the facilities committee deems it important enough to take on, might it be appropriate to invite the principals to some of those discussions so that you can get direct feedback from the safety committee, the building levels, safety committees?
That's a really good idea. Yeah.
There's two things. One, Joe, it might be a good idea to, not everyone listens to our meetings, to maybe send something out to the parents, because if there are police here in the morning and the afternoon, some parents might be concerned why there's police there. They don't know why they're there, so just let them know that that could be happening. And the second thing is about the recommendation about no one coming without an appointment, just the committee might want to just think about that. We, for better or worse, a lot of parents come to the school to drop things off for their kids, so that would be tremendous change to not be able to do that.
Yes.
So, just thinking about how to handle that should be part of that discussion.
Well, that's, that's a good point, and I think that's, that's going to be a given moving forward with a lot of these ideas, is that, that will change. It will inconvenience some people. I'm not saying that's a problem.
Yeah, not either.
But it will inconvenience some people. It will shock some people, for example, that we're requiring them to have an appointment, whereas in the past, all I have to do is come to the front door, and as, as members of the Board of Education, be prepared to hear from those people who aren't happy about that. But if that's what we decide to do because it's in the best interest of the safety-- But if that's what we decide to do, because it's in the best interest of the safety of our kids and our staff, then so be it, but be prepared for that is my suggestion. And that's a great example of needing an appointment first. That would be a sea change for a lot of people. It's a no-cost, I mean, it's a no-cost way to assist in that process, and if that's what we decide to do and the board supports that, then that's what we'll do, and people will have to get used to it.
Laura?
Well, I think, you know, that always comes back to communication, which is our responsibility. So we need to make sure that we're going to set parameters for parents and community members to understand the changes we're making and why we're making them. And I don't think anybody's going to have an argument with the reason for making the changes.
And just to clarify, the changes that have already happened in terms of keeping the doors locked in the evening through the morning, does that mean that students won't have access to their lockers, where they may be used to coming in, oh, I forgot, I need to stop by my locker before dinner, that that, am I correct in understanding that that is already-
No, that is not already, but that would be a response I would anticipate if we decided to do that.
I wasn't sure that it already happened.
No, 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 no. And I think doing that would, there's a lot to that, and I prefer not to get into the specifics of that, we can talk about that in a different venue, but there are a lot of things that we have already been kicking around regarding access to the building and the grounds outside of the school day that we would have to make some accommodations, or may want to make some accommodations for, that would not be without some kind of expense. But again, if that's what we need to do in the best interest of our students and our staff, then that's what we'd have to do.
Other questions, comments?
I just wanted to thank you for giving us this report, and also thank the many people who have given us very detailed, helpful, particular insight into concerns and really excellent suggestions for how to secure our buildings and make the schools a safer environment. And particularly appreciate people coming again and speaking to us tonight about this. It absolutely is our first responsibility as board members, as people who care for the children in our district and in our care. So we very much appreciate the tremendous effort that's already gone into this, and we look forward to working closely with all of you to, right, follow through on all of these recommendations as quickly as possible. And I would like to say that if there are expenditures that are before us that, you know, might be, even in this school year, rethought in terms of speeding up the timeline on some of the issues you have raised tonight, Joe, I hope we will take that into consideration. I know that has been a thought on some of our minds, that the sooner the better. And if we have to wait for a time for something else, it's worth making that adjustment.
Okay. Good. So it is now time for our reports, committee reports. Policy.
Those are mine. We met on February 28th, and we are continuing a multi-year plan of reviewing our policy manual. As you can see, most of them required no change. Number 6150, budget transfers, so the policy right now requires any transfer of funds over $5,000 has to be approved by the board. We're suggesting that that number be changed to $20,000. So we feel like that's a more reasonable number. Other schools have that amount, so that's a suggestion there. Let's see. Okay, so on policy number 6254, non-resident tuition, we talked about this, if we should use this, how much we would charge for someone that doesn't live in the district, what we should charge them. We currently use the state scale. We don't have to, we could charge less, we could charge more. So we're kind of looking for some input from the board on that. The committee felt like lowering it, although that was a suggestion that came about this year, maybe to entice students to come, didn't seem fair to taxpayers to charge less when they don't pay taxes, but we're looking for some input on that.
I think we might want to point out, for those who may not know or are new to the process, that, first of all, it's up to each individual school district as to whether or not they want to allow students to, out-of-district, non-resident students to attend their school district and pay tuition for doing that. So that's not a requirement, that's a local option, number one. And then, the second part of that is that there is no requirement from the state education department to charge a certain amount for tuition. It's, again, it's totally up to the local school district as to what to charge. So we do both. We allow students to attend here on a tuition basis, non-resident students to attend here on a tuition basis, and we have, this board decided long, long before I knew where Rhinebeck was on the map, that we would use the state formula to charge tuition. That can be changed at any point in time, it can stay the same for the next 20 or 30 years, that's totally the decision of the Board of Education. The thinking at that time, I believe, was that the state tuition formula is at least, whether you agree with it or not, and it's kind of confusing, as most things that come out of the state education department can be in terms of formulas, et cetera, at least it's a standard, third-party, not locally-developed formula. So it's as neutral as it could be. But you don't have to use the state formula, we had been for many years. So that's really the nexus with this particular, with this particular policy that we discussed, and that would be, would we want to come up with a different way of calculating tuition? What are the benefits to doing that? If it's higher than the state tuition, the state tuition formula? What if it's less than the state tuition formula? Is it fair? I mean, all those questions that you've mentioned before are part of the discussion. So at some point, whether it's tonight or at some point in the future, it will remain the state tuition formula until this board decides, no, we want to do it a different way.
Steve, do you know what that number is? I'll have.
It's about $19,000 for grade seven through 12, and the $17,000s for K through six.
Laura?
And as complicated as I'm sure it is, and we don't have to go through the calculation, can you give us a general sense of how they derive the number? Is that the number for the entire state of New York, or is it adjusted?
No, no, no. No, it's individual by school district.
Absolutely.
Oh, so that's our number.
Yeah, it's our number. And basically, they look at our expenditures, but they take out certain things, like transportation. These kids will not get transported by our buses, so transportation costs are not in the total number. So they take specific things out of the budget. Transportation definitely is one. I think maybe debt service they take out, because they have no bearing, because you guys decided to do a Capitol Project, so they don't pay for that. I believe those are the two items that are taken out. And it gets divided by what is called a weighted pupil unit. A regular ed student is like one, but a special ed student is, depending on their level of a service, it might be a one, a 1.25, or a 1.7. So they add all those up, and they get what is called a total weighted pupil count. And they're divided by that number they came up with. So they may come up with, you know, $19,000, or $19 million worth of expenditures, oh, you got 1,000 kids, $19,000, or $19 million divided by, you know, 1,000, there's your $19,000, $19,000 per pupil, so. But I can actually print that out and give it to you, you can look at the whole thing.
It changes from year to year.
Yeah.
The formula doesn't change, but the numbers in the formula change.
The number changes every year.
Of course. Yeah, I just wasn't sure if it was a statewide.
No.
So, right, exactly. So it's individually-
Yeah, every school has its own rates. No.
Okay. Does anyone have, do you want more feedback on this particular question now, Diane, or do you?
It doesn't have to be now, you know, if you want the policy committee to move forward or do anything with it, then.
Well, we've discussed it in long-range planning, as you know, so I think it is actually worth more investigation, but we probably don't need to do it tonight, so, if that's-
I mean, it's set in policy right now, so that's not going to change until and unless you change it.
If you wanted that to change, you would need to change policy.
Anything else from policy, or?
No, I mean, there's just, you know, some small, veteran changes.
Just another thing, too. It's not only for non-residents, it's also for foster children.
Oh.
So if a family here takes in a foster child, I charge back the original school district the non-resident tuition. And that's the number I have to use in that case for foster.
You have to use the state-
I have to use the state formula for the foster kids. I have no choice.
Okay.
But once they become adopted by the family, then they become the school district's responsibility. But as a foster kid, it's the responsibility of the school district-
Of origin.
Of origin.
Interesting. Thank you. Curriculum.
That's me. Again, I forgot to respectfully sign my name. What are these days, I'll get it?
Mystery minutes.
Mystery minutes, you can assume. Oh, that's Jack. So we talked about two main subjects, the health curriculum and summer curriculum work. In the health curriculum, Marvin talked about primarily at the high school level with regard to Title IX, and noted that two main related pieces are social health and violence. New York State Education Department says we should be teaching a connection between mental health and physical health with an enhanced understanding of attitude and behaviors that promote health, well-being, and dignity for all persons. And I said, acknowledges we are already teaching that topic some, but they want an expansion of it. And I said, Student Support Services has commissioned a study and survey that should lead to more direction for us, with results anticipated around people. The curriculum on violence currently being taught in the high school now covers a lot of territory, sexual violence, physical violence, bullying, cyberbullying, but we need to review that teaching to make sure we are in line with current thinking and best practices, particularly revisiting the topic of affirmative consent. Now is an opportune time to improve conversations around these issues. Rather than focusing on victims and perpetrators, we would like to be moving towards thinking about dignity, responsibility, and respect. Hopefully, the classroom conversations can be more engaging, nuanced, and complex. Ideally, we would give students the tools they need to navigate the landscape rather than terrifying them. There were three female teachers who have volunteered to get involved in revisiting and revising the health curriculum conversations. This is also an opportunity to get some clubs involved, the gender equity and diversity clubs, and possibly others, and to rework teacher training on Title IX and DASSA. And I added after the meeting to note that April is Sexual Assault Awareness Month, and National Sexual Violence Resource Center has a number of resources that are already exploring on the website that I included. As for the summer curriculum work, Marvin noted that a few things are perpetuating regarding summer curriculum work and professional development. By the end of the school year, all the teachers should be aware of the new state standards. Over the summer, maybe we can start looking at how teachers will phase in new pieces of the standards. Marvin will announce before the budget vote an invitation for new summer projects, curriculum projects. Since there are tight budget constraints, we will have to prioritize work gradually. As a district, we try to encourage summer work as an opportunity for fueling the engines of innovation, while recognizing we have financial limitations. Maybe we cut proposed projects down in scope for hours, but we will try to affirm our principles while tightening our budgets. Marvin also talked about the process for choosing and implementing a new elementary school math product, emphasizing the difference between textbooks and curricula. All math products will have far more materials than we can use, so choices need to be made about what to include in an organized way, rather than pre-billing it. So those choices make up the curriculum. We also discussed opportunities for developing projects that Rhinebeck Science Foundation may be able to-
Any questions? Thank you.
Do I ask a question?
Oh, sorry, Steve.
Sorry. On the summer curriculum work, last time we spoke about this, I think, I don't know if Marvin did it, or somebody else did it, the phasing in of this new curriculum was going to be spread out enough that it wasn't really going to impact summer hours to what we budgeted. Has that changed since last time? So it's not really an issue?
As far as I understood, did anybody else-
That was my understanding as well. Marvin also has access to grants-
Right. That's what I thought.
That, yeah, Title I and things of that nature, which he has money in those grants, too, to supplement what we have in our budget.
So we're not really cutting down the scope for hours, as it states here?
No, 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 the cutting down scope for hours has to do with, Marvin is going to invite teachers to submit summer projects, or projects for summer curriculum, and depending on what gets submitted, we may be able to accept some of them, but we may have to cut down the scope for hours of those projects. We may have to prioritize those projects. So separate from implementing the new standards and phasing in those new standards.
And that's not an unusual part of the process.
Thank you. Okay, long-range planning.
That's me, and a couple of other people.
No, it's you.
No, this one is me. There, a couple more. Later. And this one's really sort of old news. Back at the end of February, we talked about security issues, many of the things that we discussed tonight, so I'm going to skip over that. Deirdre has worked up a second draft of the district brochure, which is with communications now, which I think we'll report out on in a moment. We talked about the budget and the coffee with the board, which have all happened and been successful. We did talk about trying to get some more feedback from the finance committee, who more directly oversees budgetary items, to give us some direction for things we need to investigate, look at, work on. And then we were talking about the naming convention for the budget event on Saturday, which did make a work session. So we are going to look at all kinds of other things that will be reported on in a minute. Any questions? This is old news.
I'll just piggyback on yours. The meeting that came directly after on March 5th, we continued to discuss safety and security concerns. Again, most of this has fed into, I think, the report we've already heard from Joe Phelan. We talked about how safety audits are conducted in other districts, and talked about exploring the possibility of doing the same in Rhinebeck. We talked about sharing resources with the village and town. And we did prepare for ourselves, before we went into coffee with the board, I should share with people here, that we had a very large turnout for our coffee with the board discussions, both in the morning, really, particularly in the morning at chancellor, many, many, I think we had over 30 parents come to share their concerns with us, and then in the evening. And at that time, we did articulate for ourselves, going into those conversations, some shared principles, and I'll just quickly restate them, that obviously, we were facing cuts. The committee has been meeting since last summer to look at all parts of the organization, to understand the structure of the organization in the school district, and to hear from those who are the heads of each department and section of the organization. That our first priority always is to preserve programs for students. Wherever possible, the goal has been to make reductions to staff through attrition, rather than looking to do it in any other way, so whether through resignation, or absence, or retirement. To the extent possible, a goal of group has been to look at how to keep positions whole, which is to say, we want to retain good faculty who have built their lives here in this community and in this school, and we, it is our goal not to bring in people at less than full at less than full-time if we can possibly avoid it. And as a reminder, long-range planning has been focusing on year one on immediate responses to budgeting challenges while recognizing that multi-year planning, strategic planning is in order. The state of New York actually requires this of all districts. What we have been doing, however, goes far beyond the kind of simple financial worksheets that are mandated to look at, to look at planning in every dimension of the district. Questions? And do we have something from Communications?
Yes. And that's me. So, during one of our snow days, we had no power here, so Claudia Cooley of the Chamber invited us to come to her office to discuss ways that the district and the Chamber could work together. We talked about trying to build community and raise awareness for kids about business opportunities in Reinbeck, not only for kids but for faculty. If we're fundraising for particular clubs and that kind of thing, can we put together fundraising programs here locally rather than going across the river to much larger retail establishments? Is there a possibility to set up internships for kids so that they can get some work experience? We talked about community service opportunities for kids. In particular, they, they spoke about the Chamber and Rotary both being places that could always use some extra hands for kids. We also talked about the possibility of potentially inviting high school students to the Chamber monthly breakfast to just start meeting some of the local business people. We also talked about ways that the kids could support local events. The Hudson Valley Hot Air Bloom Festival is going to be at the fairgrounds this year, so are there ways that kids, art club, any, any kinds of kid, uh, clubs could get involved with promoting that event? I think it's already happened, but Joe is going to put Claudia in touch with Mary Winkler in the Guidance Office to set up potential speakers who are local and can talk to our college and career classes, and also reaching out to college planning professionals who run programs specifically to teach kids about interviewing etiquette and expectations in the local place, that kind of thing. She is also going to reach out to some local Realtors to figure out a good time for us to get together with a handful of them to, to see what kind of information we as a district can provide to local Realtors for prospective buyers in the district.
Questions? I'm sorry, I think you had one more long-range planning.
I think I do too, Lauren. Okay, so our last meeting, we worked with Forecast Five, this was after the budget work session, to look at multi-year achievement data for ELA and math as well as region scores. And it became really clear to us that we needed to bounce this to the Curriculum Committee to have Marvin provide some context. You know, what does grade level trending show us in the testing data? What does a particular cohort's data look like over time? And how do we understand the raw data in reference to the opt-out movement in this district in particular? So, we're, in our April 5th meeting, we're going to be talking with Marvin about that, I believe. Also talked about prioritizing summer work and needing to understand the teacher's commentary to us regarding the types of kids that are coming through the district and trying to figure out ways that we can change our practice to meet kids where they are, support them in their learning. So, that, I wish Frank were here so he could hear that. And Tom suggested that in the future, these kinds of discussions should be happening in the fall, not here in the heat of budget season, which we all heartily agree with. And reiterated our desire that administrators work with staff members to determine the best course of action in managing not only this budget, but budgets in the future as enrollments continue to decline. So, I think our next meeting, we're going to be reviewing some of the recommendations that the administrators are putting forth to Joe, and then the following meeting will do the academic performance recap after curriculum has met with Marvin.
Questions? Diane?
I don't have a question on the minutes, but I would just suggest maybe we suspend the meeting for a few minutes for those students that may have to leave to get home by nine, so we can sign.
Yes, that's a good idea.
Anyone needs that?
Is everyone in favor of suspending the meeting for a few minutes? So, we may sign time sheets for those who, or sheets are taken into your gov class. So, if you want to approach and get your sheet signed, we're happy to sign. If you need to leave.
Not suggesting you do leave, but it's an opportunity for the meeting.
Any of us can sign for you, just come up to any of us.
Has anybody talked about separating out, um, safety as our line item?
Just watch your step.
You can't, you couldn't put it on to plant maintenance.
Do none of you guys need signatures?
But you can't separate it as a separate proposition to be voted on separately. It's got to be voted on in the.
As part of a budget, yes.
Here goes. You're welcome.
Sort, you can kind of track costs if you wanted to.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. Oh, certainly we can, yeah. We could, we could definitely pull out this security type of things, and these are, and this is what it costs.
Does that make sense?
Hey, Dan.
It's something that I think you want to kind of show the, you know, that you're spending money on it, right? That it's.
Oh, yeah. No, I get it. No, I get that. That's a good part. I mean, I've, I've been thinking about a lot of these things. And we have to do this whole new accounting for the federal government, and it's.
For safety or just?
No, just in, in general. They, they want to know how much is being spent in each building.
I thought that went away.
You doing? Good. Uh-uh. It's going to be a unbelievable pain in the butt.
Even because we don't even get much money from the.
Doesn't matter. What's that? It's not the purpose of it. The purpose of it is for the federal government to be able to look at and say.
Well.
Money on. That's it. That's, that's the thing. It really affects us too much, but it will affect.
Have you had like two elementary schools?
I had taught finance in the list. I saw finance in the revised. And we don't have anything from personal.
Compared to other elementarys in the area of.
All right. Good.
Don't know what they need it for, but the reason is to be able to make sure that we're.
All right, so, shall we?
Unappropriate.
Pull back together? Yeah. All right, we are done with our minutes for our board committee reports. Good news. Good news.
Tom, do you have good news?
Do you have any good news?
Oh, oh. Sorry, I was talking to Steve, sorry.
Nope.
We were finishing our conversation, sorry.
I'd like to thank Dave Arestock and his Wellness Committee for putting on that Susan Sheng on. It was awesome.
It really was.
It was really well-attended and a great event, so.
Fantastic, yes. Great one. We all agree. Any other good news?
Yeah, I'm, I was trying to get Tom to say this, but Tom.
He's with the Wellness Committee.
This is different, the Wellness Committee. Tom accepted in the part of the school district the Utica National School Safety Excellence Award, for I think the eighth year in a row the other day, so.
Excellent.
Yep.
Thank you. Well, I think it's good news that we had such a populous group of students this evening to watch the board in action, and I think that that's extremely heartening to see, following on the heels of seeing students be so involved in activities with student council and the entire student body last week around commemoration and memorialization of the loss of life at Parkland, Florida. Really to see our students acting in the world in relation to the things they're learning is particularly in a respectful way in relation to each other and acknowledging, acknowledgement of differences and plurality of viewpoints with respect is, truly gives, I think, all of us hope for working together in our community when we have differences as well. I think that's good news. Okay. Old business. Public comment? Yes.
Hello. I've never done this, so can I ask questions and make comments? Do both? Do both?
You, you, you can ask questions, but we don't really answer them.
That's okay.
We can record and take them in. Yes.
Regina Bessa, Middle School Secretary, Non-Instructional Unit Secretary, Mom of Awesome Boys, and Taxpayer. So, yes, the students were amazing during their program to recognize the tragedy in Florida and others. How horrible though to see such amazing young people crummed for fear. That, that really broke my heart. It broke my heart to see them, because I know it wasn't easy. Which brings me to the, the subject of the school safety. I mean, really encouraged about the measures that were discussed regarding the buzzer, making appointments and so forth, and fast-tracking them, I think, is necessary. I'm curious though, and I just, I just think it needs to be addressed. The BMS RHS greeter position was posted on the 10th of January. It's not been filled and interviews were never done for that, to my understanding. So, I'm curious in today's climate with safety and the greeters being such a vital point of contact with the outside world, why this is not being addressed? Also, with regard to the implementation of a locked school during the school year, that makes sense. The school is unsecured in the summer. We have staff, faculty, students come to the school to work over the summer, to participate in athletic programs, so the doors remain open. The gym doors are wide open because it's hot. I would like to know what, if anything has been discussed to address that? A concern of mine primarily is because in the summertime, there's no one to answer the door, if you will. If the, now that the high school main office is down to one summer employee as well as the principal, if those two individuals are out at the office at the same time, obviously, I mean, they, they can tap on the Guidance Office window and, and something, but there's nobody there to greet people, incoming families, new students. I also wondered with the appointments, I think it's a great idea. I think if kids forget their lunch one day and they go hungry, maybe tomorrow they'll remember it. For people to make appointments to come to the school, I, I'm not sure if I know of any other district that has taxpayers come through the school to the greeter, by the gym, the main office, past the middle school cafeteria, down to the central office to pay taxes. So, I'm wondering, and it might be something just to think about, in the summertime, the central office has more staff at all times through the summer, and maybe that can be incorporated as an entrance point or something, just because there's nothing more discouraging, I think, for either the community or even new families coming to the district to have all of these great expectations about Reinbeck, and they come to a school that's locked. The lights are off in the front of the building because custodial staff are working in the back. Main office lights are dim in the high school because secretary's on holiday, Ed's in a meeting, and I'm not hearing the doorbell upstairs. So, I mean, I, it's a great idea, but logistically, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. But I do feel like it has to be fast-tracked because the summer's going to be here, we're going to be doing curriculum work and so forth, and I just don't understand why the greeter position is, hasn't even been interviewed for. I'm confused about that. So, if we're, if we're patching it together, is, does that, is, does that fall into that breakage term, which I, I've never heard before, but, and also, in keeping positions whole, that seems kind of counterproductive to the consistency. Someone at the greeters knows family members, they have access to the data management system, possibly see the red flags for students who have order protections against their family. We don't want every single aide to have access to that. I know Marvin wouldn't, I wouldn't want it either, but one person should be able to have sort of authority over that position so that they know how to work the student management system, know when there's a flag on the student's record, and that one person is responsible and accountable for, you know, the, the confidentiality of the student information, but has enough knowledge to know, yes, this person can sign this child out, no, this person cannot. Does that make sense? I know it's a whole lot of stuff, but that, I mean, it just speaks to the fact that that is a, a position that shouldn't just be filled in by a pulse. It really has so much more significance for so many reasons, starting from the warm, fuzzy, high, it's friendly face of the desk to, oh my gosh, this is the first person, the point of access to, to both campuses. So, I, I, I would appreciate it if it was addressed and given the significant that I really feel it warrants. And on that note, thank you very much.
Regina, if I, if I could. No, you don't stand there. Unless you're going to say more. I would, at, at the risk of getting into a discussion in a public meeting about staff, I, I just suggest you talk to Mr. Chemnitzer about the issue with the greeter, and I think he can bring you up to speed.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Victor. Teacher here, community member. I'll be brief. I, I did want to wait so I could hear some of the discussions tonight before I came up, and I appreciate the, you know, the time and thought, because I can tell that you guys listened to a lot of the comments Saturday at the, or session? Session?
Got it right.
Thank you.
As you get closer to being involved in some of the final decisions, I also appreciate to hear that, that there's an attempt for intake from the, from the principals, from the staff members. That's important, and I'm just encouraged to, you know, I'll encourage my colleagues to try to reach out and, and ensure it'll work the other way. As we get closer to the, to the finalization of some decisions, it's, it's important, again, just to make sure that, that everybody's, that there's a balance, and you guys, you know, seem to be very tuned in to, you know, trying to keep positions whole. It's also important to make sure that, that no one group of people or students feels like they're suffering anymore. So, for example, in, in the context of English, you know, electives versus AS classes, and, you know, that's a hard balancing act. A lot of times, we have this very strong voice for students that are gifted and not always the students that are in the middle. Similarly, different staff groups don't always get representation too. So, it's, it's just important to keep that in mind, that, that, you know, teachers, any administrative, there should be a balance as we approach some making some final decisions. And I think people are looking for that. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name's Jennifer Zanger, and I am Fairbairn leader of Reinbeck. And I moved here with the excitement of moving to a smaller community and what it means to have my child, who's five, in a school where people will know her and where safety comes from connections. And I feel like that aspect of safety hasn't been kind of talked about in full in this meeting. And while I very much appreciate the safety measures being put in place with technology, I worry that the desire to keep out without paying attention to kind of building the community within and knowing each other, that that's what brings safety and knowing young people, and that when young people are perhaps having some crisis in their life that could cause them to do some really unsafe things to other people, that we have enough going on between teachers and between students that we're catching that. Because we're looking out there in the world, that's what's causing the lack of safety for the most part in schools, and we are so well-positioned as a tiny community to do it well without creating, and I, you know, I just, I will say that I think. know, I just, I will say that I think having only an appointment to get into a community school is something that feels antithetical to the kind of spirit that we want our kids to grow up in. And with that, I'll just add that I have been paying attention as best I can, and the idea that specials and kind of the ways that we're enriching and giving kids added supports both before school and after school and then during school, because we have special teachers who can commit for adaptive PE, adaptive art, ways that we're knowing our kids and having an integrated experience where we're knowing them as whole people is the best preventive measure we can take. So, keeping those positions whole, and, I mean, I would be so happy to participate in anything that talks about how we're enhancing connections that are of greatest prevention and create the best safety and the best experience for children as for families. And if someone knew here, I want to walk in that spirit. I want my daughter to have that experience of this place, and I think most people would like that for their kids, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Jen Burida-Fernando. I'm a faculty board leader at Chancellor, living in Rhinebeck. And I also wanted to say that I was really hurtened to hear what you said about trying to keep positions whole. We've had an excellent experience in this district. We've been here since my daughter was in kindergarten. And I have to say that I also want to sort of express how concerned I was to hear about possible initial cuts, although I think that is not the case for many special teachers. I think it boils down to just being an art teacher and not a library assistant. But I just wanted to say that I feel that those positions are tremendously important as those are the teachers that students get to know over the course of their time at a school. And I think that they fulfill some really important roles in terms of greeting kids in the morning, putting them on the bus at the end of the day. I think those are critical times where we can be building that community. I think that making those sorts of cuts, even though it might not seem huge for a teacher to go from full-time to 28-hour, could really make, force a decision for some really good teachers to leave our district, and I would hate for that to happen. I think, when I came here, the two PE teachers had been here for, like, 25 years or, you know, something like that. And I think that when we create a community in which the teachers feel valued and the teachers feel like we care about them and we want to take care of them, that translates for our students as well. And I, I mean, I think all of those areas are important. I think the positions are important in general, but I also want to say that this particular group that we have at CLS has been outstanding in terms of their ability to do their jobs, build community, fundraise, bring notoriety to the school, and I just can't say enough positive things about them. Anyway, we're really hard jobs, so thank you for listening.
Thank you so much. Other comments?
Okay, so I have one other I'd like to bring up, but I did mention to the board members in my packet. We have, if you don't count next week, we have three weeks before a budget has to be adopted, and this is not a newsflash to any of you, but for some other, for consideration of some other thinking that have been, ideas that have been brought up for continuing with as positive a budget development process as we can, we can put together. We have, by my count, we have April 3rd, April 10th, and April 17th. They are all Tuesdays. We are also scheduled to meet, although for a very brief meeting, on Tuesday, April 24th, for the annual Bosse's Budget Vote. That should be all of 10 minutes, actually. So, I just wanted us to leave tonight's meeting, one way or the other, with a list of which Tuesdays we're going to be meeting in, in April, as we had talked about a meeting to discuss staffing-related matters with our building principals and executive sessions. So, I want to get that set up. So, I need, I need the meeting dates before I can set that up, is the long and the short of it. It's really, it's really up to you.
I'm available all of the Tuesdays, or, you know, and I can be available on other days.
As am I.
As am I as well. Now, Steve is not on the 3rd, I don't think.
No, I mean, I was just going to say, too, the Finance Committee is only meeting one more time before we have to adopt the budget, and that's on April 5th, right? So, it would, I think, make more sense to talk to the principals prior to that meeting. What do you think? Is that, so, I don't know, that doesn't leave us much time.
Well, we have to meet on, on April 5th, on April 3rd, rather.
But you won't be here.
I don't think I'm here.
Well, we could meet with them, and your colleagues could.
Yeah, I don't see what I have. I might be able to move it. I don't remember exactly what it was.
I mean, I, my, and again, this is just my preference, but your meeting. I would suggest if we met on April 3rd and pushed out the budget hearing and final, you know, finalizing of the vote to April 17th, just to give us another week. Whether we meet on April 10th as well, that's really up to all of you. I mean, I could be available all of those Tuesdays, but I think if we met on April 3rd, and I will see if the building principals can make themselves available for, for that, and then April 17th to actually have the hearing and the vote. And if we need to plug in April 10th, we can, if we feel we're going to need another meeting, but totally up to you guys. I just would like to get it decided tonight so we can make some plans.
So, if I understand correctly, if we meet on April 3rd, we could also meet with the principals, well, we hope we could also meet with the principals on that.
I will, as soon as you tell me, yeah, we're meeting that night, I would, I will get something out to them tomorrow, and if they're available, they'll be there, obviously. I've given them a heads up.
Okay.
That that may happen.
And aside from Steve, can everyone else be there on the 3rd? Okay.
I would suggest we do, like, a 6 o'clock executive.
Yeah, that's great.
Meeting, and then have our regular meeting at 7:30.
I think that's a good idea. Give us enough time to have that conversation.
6 o'clock, everyone, 3.
Yeah.
And the budget hearing on the 17th will be at 7, right?
I think we've done it at 7 and then followed it with a, with a regular meeting. And if we kind of leave the 10th open in case we decide, wow, we did another, another meeting, then we can plug that in. But that's worse for people.
It would be my preference that we all hold the 10th in case we need to meet together and work through final issues. Is everyone okay with that?
All right, sounds good. Thank you on that one. Did you want to bring this other?
Well, I'll let you.
Oh, thanks. Chicken.
I'll try and add.
No, no, yes, I know. I just want to let the board know that both your board president and I have received a letter from a community member who lives within a fairly, fairly close proximity to the school, who has expressed concern about the traffic in the morning and, I assume, in the afternoon, in the environs not only of BMS-RHS, but also in the environs of Knollwood Road and Chancellor. His concern is parents driving their kids to school, kids driving themselves to school. And he's also looped Mayor Bassett into the, into the conversation as well, so Gary is aware of his concern. I expect I will be talking about it when we meet with Gary. Mark and I meet with Gary, it's the first week in April sometime, at our Rhinebeck Collaboration Meeting. But I felt that you ought to be brought up to speed on the concern if you didn't already know about it. I believe the desire is for us to require kids to ride the buses and not allow parents to drive their kids to school, as well as to prohibit students from driving to school. I did contact our legal counsel. We cannot, the only thing we can prohibit is student parking on school property. We could control, and if we were of the mind to prohibit that, then that would, in my mind, that would beg the question as to where all those kids will park, and I can imagine village streets were clogged with traffic and parking than they might be now, but that's just my opinion. And we, I think Tom did some research into it, and we can't require a kid to ride the bus. We have to be able to provide transportation for them, but we can't make them take that transportation. So, some of the things that are being requested, I think, are either not allowable or not workable, but I wanted to bring it to your, my last email was that I would bring it to your attention, and we will talk about it with Gary Bassett at the next Rhinebeck Collaboration Meeting, and just wanted you to be aware.
Diane.
First, I appreciate all the time that you've, both of you have spent trying to address the concern in the community. I think, as a school, we always try to be good neighbors to those around us from time to time. Since I've been on the board, we've gotten letters from neighbors of issues that crop up.
Sure.
I think, you know, there isn't, like you said, really anything we maybe can do about it. Possibly, we could just put something out in our newsletters, just reminding parents, you know, that people do live around the school and, you know, just to take care when driving, and we're always in a rush to get our kids here or there, and, you know, possibly just remind them to be good neighbors. I know that the driving class is coming up in May for kids that want to park on campus. Maybe we could address that there about, again, paying attention and coming in with people that live in the area, just to be, do everything, anything we could do.
Laura.
Has there been any consideration about talking to Keith Dunn about traffic and those kinds of things around this issue?
There may, there may have been conversations between Sergeant Dunn and Mayor Bassett, because that's really where that is. But, I mean, I'm sure that'll come up in our, in our conversation if it hasn't. I'd be surprised if it hasn't already occurred.
And Mayor Bassett's been looped into the communications as well.
Yeah.
I think it's a really good point about the, the safe-driving measures that the school encourages students who do drive and park at the high school. They need to participate in those activities if they want to park at the school, right? And certainly around prom time, there's always a lot of, so, I think that the, our concerned neighbor really, I mean, has spoken passionately about the, you know, concern not to see any, any student be hurt inadvertently, and, of course, we share that concern.
Yeah. I would have to say, though, having lived on that Knollwood Road corner, it's not just students that come flying around that corner.
Oh, yeah, I know, it's parents, too, yes. So, I think communicating with parents is a crucial piece of this. Okay. Any other, other? Yes?
So, it's been, over the last few years, I think, as a board, we've made a point to try to make public, when there's board seats open, whether or not current members are going to run for that seat, or if it's open, to make that information available to the community. The deadline is coming up for that, April 17?
For the petition?
Yeah, April 16, April 16, sorry. So, if anyone is, anyone wants to run for the board, April 16, the update paper work in, I have decided that I will run for my seat.
Yeah. Where we elected after that. That's very wonderful.
If you need hard copy of that, Whitney can get it to you, but you get it.
Your petition.
Oh, okay.
Oh, brilliant. You've been out.
Yes, I have, in more ways than one.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you. That's great. Yes, Mark, pleasure.
So, I'll just add to the conversation, I also intend to run for reelection, so.
Wunderbar.
My petition will be forthcoming for your signature.
Wonderful, wonderful. All right.
And go more than just 25. Go a few more than that.
Yeah, you never know.
You never know, you never know. We were warned about that. You were warned about that the other day.
What if you don't have?
Yeah, Whitney went to the prospective board members thing. I didn't know I wasn't going. I was just going to see what.
I think it was a great idea. Glad you were.
That's brilliant, yeah.
And they gave me the information, and Dave Shaw was there, and he threw us over a lot of information. I was really convinced that I can't imagine not going to it if you're going to a lot of stuff.
So, he said you should get more than 25 signatures.
David Shaw said you should get double.
Double? Why? In case there's a challenge?
I wouldn't go there.
That's a lot.
If there is any issue with any of those, you want to make sure you are, there's no way possible.
Wow, that's a lot.
He just said, he was just going to do double.
See, those people.
Okay, I'm so glad you guys said that publicly before you heard about the double signatures.
I've always heard a few extra, but probably.
Yeah, I was thinking, maybe the big districts.
Wow, I didn't know that.
It's so easy to eliminate a signature.
Okay, yeah. Well, we are fortunate to have two such experienced board members be willing to stand again, so thank you very much. Any other, other?
I don't have any other.
Okay, then, I guess we're ready for our action items?
Done.
Fasten your seatbelts. Is there anyone who wishes to remove any item from the consent agenda? Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So.
Second. All those in favor? That is unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to appoint the following individuals, whose names were provided by the Dutchess County Board of Elections in the capacities and for the pay rates so noted, for their employment with respect to the conduct of the budget vote and board election on May 15, 2018, in accordance with the requirements and guidelines of the Dutchess County Board of Elections. Elections inspectors trained on use of optical scan voting machines, Mark Savino, $150, Remeliscom, $150, voting machine technician, Rich Perkins, $150.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve, as a first reading, the consideration of modifications to the following board policies? Number 6150, budget transfers, and number 6251, sale and lease of district property.
So.
Second. Yes.
Comment. The policy, as it's written in our packets, has a typo, so we're.
Which one of the two?
I'm sorry, 6150, budget transfers.
Okay.
We've got not to exceed 20,000, all transfers in excess of 5,000. That needs to be up to 20 also.
Yes.
I'll own that one.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, those in favor of the motion is amended.
Uh huh.
That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve additional spring coaches for the 2017-18 school year? Modified track, distance, and throwing, Lisa Hackett, $2,478.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of Jennifer Ramo and David Airstock to conduct athletic placement process testing for the 2017-18 spring sports season as necessary.
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the list of additional emergency conditional substitute teachers and non-instructional staff for the 2017-18 school year?
So.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous. That motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the revised 2017-18 school tax bills totaling $4,318.23 in reduction adjustments and make appropriate refunds to the property owner if required.
So.
Second. Discussion? All those in favor? That motion passes. It's unanimous. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the following resolution? Be it resolved that the Board of Education hereby approves the 2017-18 Release and Settlement Agreement concerning Student Number 99248, and be it further resolved that the Board of Education hereby authorizes the President of the Board of Education to execute such agreement on behalf of the district.
So.
Second. Any discussion? Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the appointment of additional enrichment program advisors for Chancellor Livingston Elementary School for the 2017-18 school year, see attached.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to accept a grant award from Project Fit America, sponsored by Dan and Wave and Shoprite, in support of funding for the implementation of the Project Fit America program, as submitted by Kevin Yornell and Ryan Edson in the amount of $25,000. $18,000 for the Project Fit Grant Program to enrich the school district's physical education program, and $7,000 to be used towards installation of the outdoor equipment component of the program as stipulated.
So moved.
Second. Just want to say, this is an incredibly amazing accomplishment, but on the part of our colleagues and the entire community, it's an amazing gift to the district. All those in favor? Okay, that's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to approve the probationary civil service appointment of Angelica Rasuvo, 5.75 hours per diem, as food service helper with a 26-week probationary period effective February 14, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor? That's unanimous, that motion passes. May I have a motion upon the recommendation of the superintendent of schools to adopt the proposed Rhinebeck Central School District 2018-19 school calendar?
So moved.
Second. Discussion?
Yes.
Yes, we knew there would be.
Diane? So if you responded to me, I'm sorry, it was up.
I did, but I know you were.
Kind of up to date, but, so I appreciate moving the May day there, because I think it's easier to, if we go over our snow days, which has been the case.
Agreed.
So I think that's great. I'm wondering if we can move a superintendent's conference day after spring break, which could maybe give us a little bit of flexibility.
Okay, so that, so my response to you, which you.
That's where we left off.
Yeah, no, that's right. And I had this conversation with Whitney and with Tom, and maybe I'm missing something, maybe. I'm not sure what moving a superintendent's conference day later in the school year gets us in terms of dealing with more than the allotted number of snow days. I, it doesn't, I don't, I don't know how it makes any difference. I think what you would need to do, you, we would need to do to have that impact, you really need to move a vacation day later in the school year. You're limited there. You're not going to move Yan Kapor, Rosh Hashanah, Christmas, Thanksgiving, you're not going to move them till later in the year.
Day after Thanksgiving?
Excuse me? Well, that would be, that's the only other possibility, as I look at the way next year's calendar is shaping up, that if, if you brought everybody in that Wednesday, and you plunked that day sometime later in the year, then if you had to use it.
Take it back.
Wouldn't be an issue, because you'd be using vacation day. What we've been trying to do this year, I mean, and who knows what weather is going to come in each particular year, but the only vacation days you have are those days during spring break. So that's why we're in this bind about taking away spring break. You don't have much else. I mean, I, I wouldn't have, you know, it's not ideal for me, but I don't know that it gets us anything.
So my thinking, and it's maybe not accurate, but my thinking was if you had a superintendent's conference day, that could, and we go over snow days, that could then become a regular day of school. And I, I thought in the past, one time, a superintendent's conference day ended up getting chunked out into extra hours.
Yeah, two-hour.
So that's what I mean with the flexibility, that it's, you know, becomes a possibility.
That was, if I, no, no, I appreciate, I'm not, I'm not trying to rain on your parade, I mean, we need to be looking at possible ways of dealing with this in the future. So I think what that got us that year, where we used one too many, and we made the teachers come in for three two-hour blocks after school, which the building principals absolutely hate, because it's a, it's insane for them to keep track of all of their people and all the different things they're, they're doing. But that's, that beside the point. What it got us was teachers get paid for 184 days, they work for 184 days. And I know where, I understand where that's coming from, but that has been the battle cry for the board in other years when we've needed an extra day, is we pay the teachers for 184 days, we want them to work 184 days. Totally get that. That's all that gets you, is the 184th teacher day. It doesn't get you more instructional time, it just gets you another teacher day. Which is not insignificant, you're going to get it someplace, but that's why we're bringing teachers in for two superintendent's conference days next week, so they work 184 days. And if I thought it would help us, I'd, I'd say absolutely. I don't see how it helps us. And if you don't care about bringing in the teachers over spring break to make up one or two of the days, then it doesn't matter. If that helps, if you don't want to do that, and that helps, maybe that's the only thing, maybe that's, maybe that's one thing it gets you, is maybe you don't have to bring them in over a spring break to work their 184th day. So I'm, I'm not opposed to it, I just want to make sure we all realize what we're getting by doing that, and we're not getting more instructional time out of that, we're getting another teacher work day.
Well, right, I mean, yes, a superintendent's conference day is.
Right.
For staff.
Right.
It's just, we, I think we just know from, from this week what a kind of disaster it is to try to go into spring break, winter's going later and later, you know, unfortunately, people are making plans, even though it's been on the schedule for a year, that it could be a work day. Trying to avoid that at all costs, I think, is kind of important.
Well.
I don't know if it may be asking the administrators and the, you know, the leadership from the staff, like if they have thoughts on, you know, on the calendar and what could be done to alleviate it, but I think going into the same situation and ending up here next year, and then trying to figure out after it's a problem, isn't the most productive. So I don't know if maybe we just need more input from, from them. I mean, I, I remember now, you're saying that, the administrators, that that was, that was a big issue.
No.
That was difficult. But I don't know if it's more difficult than coming in on spring break, like, you know, I don't know, they're the ones doing it, I don't know if the, you know, the RTA leadership and Annie has any suggestions on what they would prefer, you know, I just don't know that one day isn't going to be enough. We've gone over, the last few years, we've gone over.
Global warming.
I know, but I can't stop that.
Yeah.
Well, one, one thing I would say, regardless of how you kind of line up on that issue, is that I would want to get back to the district's administrators to see what superintendent's conference day they would move, and when, in April or May, and I don't want to bump into state testing, for example, I don't know off the top of my head when that stuff is scheduled, so I would want to get back to them and say, hey, if we moved it later in the year, so as to avoid a superintendent's confer, but we don't have a superintendent's conference day that late. See, that's the thing, is I don't, I don't know what it gets you. And I'll ask them to, the other thing, you know, to think about is what Steve mentioned was, do you want to just not schedule November 21 as a vacation day, and just put that at the end of the year, towards the end of the year, you know?
I think, I mean, I think that's the last resort option, but I mean, I think we have to consider that, I mean.
Well, it's not last resort if we're putting it in the calendar now.
There's been years where we haven't had it.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
The reason why it tends to be there is we have attendance issues on those, on the day before also.
Yeah.
So it's not perfect. I mean, I would say if we add that, I probably wouldn't add it to Memorial Day, because then it becomes a vacation holiday.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Put it somewhere.
For next year, oh, I'm sorry, yeah. No, go ahead.
I was just thinking, what about putting it kind of towards the end of March? March is the only month with no days off.
Yeah.
And that does get us, you know, at least late in the snow season.
In the winter.
And then there's a, because I feel like there's grumbling if there's a month that doesn't have.
Anything.
Any days off.
You know, I, well, I'll always, I'll always say I'm so over that. I mean, I've heard it for years, and it's like, you guys want everything, you guys want to defy, defy the time-space continuum with this, not you guys, I'm talking about the staff, it just can't happen that way. You can't get everything you want within X number of days. So there's trade-offs, that's, that's a trade-off. And my concern would only be that, as we're seeing this year, March can be a pretty crappy month.
Yeah, it's true. It might be too.
Well, so maybe it will, maybe it won't, but, so now you're almost looking at putting it in April, and if you're going to put it in April, then you might as well put April 22 back in the calendar, and take that other, that Pi Day, or Bridging Day, or whatever you want to call it, and put that on the 24th of May. I mean, there's options, but there aren't a lot of great options.
I just want to throw one other crazy thought out there.
Sure.
You can't, the contract says you can't work past Ratings Day, is that right?
You can't work past the Friday during the week in which the last regents is given.
The only other suggestion I thought was that superintendent's conference day, whatever you want to call it, could be graduation day, and all our staff could come to graduation. Just want to throw that out there.
On a Saturday.
Will you agree to make that part of your platform?
On a Saturday.
I'm just trying to figure it out.
It's your all day.
It's a possible thing.
Or it could be the first day of summer development work. Right, the last.
Well, it could be halfway that, and then the rest of the day at tenders. Just throwing it out there.
Could you grasp that straw? They can't work the Friday past.
They can't work past the Friday during the week in which the last regents exam is given. So on next year's calendar, you, you could bring them in on the 28th, because the last regents exam is given the 26th. But next year is an extraordinarily late year for regents exams, so you won't have that every year. Personally, I.
Sorry, Mark, sorry. Mark?
I'm sorry.
Mark wishes to speak.
So I just have a question, you know, look, I'm sorry, I didn't bring this up earlier, but looking at this draft calendar, should we have the first makeup day on May 24 rather than April 14?
Well, yeah, yeah, that's got to be changed, yep. You're right. Yeah. I thought we changed that.
Yeah, I put that in the, that was my, in my.
I'm pretty sure we did, but maybe. Yeah, we, we already, somebody brought that to my attention, we made a change.
Well, I think we have two calendars sitting at our desk.
We've got two here.
And I, no, you've got one of mine.
Mine doesn't say 24, it says 15.
No, then we're here.
I got a 4/22 here.
Tom's got the right one.
Good point, Mark.
But that's even.
Mark, you're.
Thank God.
What is the first make-up day?
That's not right either, so.
I don't have the right even.
No, it should be 5/24.
Yeah, I thought we got 4/22.
The first make-up day would be May 24, wouldn't it?
Yeah. Yes, it's an error.
Okay.
Yeah. Remember that time-space continuum I mentioned? We've just crossed into the Twilight Zone.
It's a draft.
It's a draft.
So we'll get, we'll get that fixed.
We're not voting on this tonight, then?
I suggest we not, especially, especially if the board wants to be there.
May I motion to table?
Yes. So moved. Yes, okay, all those in favor, table it. Okay, that's unanimous, that motion's table.
That's fine, I wouldn't change the first day of school, that's usually what people are concerned about, and I get, when is the first day of school? Nothing we're talking about should affect the first day.
The Wednesday after.
No, 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 no.
Which should stay as.
Do you, do you want to, do you want to see Pi Day off, that?
Is that the 15th of February?
Yeah, you can definitely take that.
That's the day before Thanksgiving, it's the 21st of November.
Oh, Pi Day.
Thought we were talking.
P.I.E., or Bridging Day.
The day before Thanksgiving.
March 14.
Do you want to see that gone? I don't want to take it off and then have moaning and groaning afterwards, it doesn't matter to me.
I think it's a good idea.
Okay.
Personally, I, I would vote, you know, we've got three other days off in November, and I think that in order to avoid, or to help alleviate, and avoid, to help alleviate, we should leave that day to.
Okay. I don't know how your colleagues feel, but I, it's why I'm asking. You will have attendance issue that day.
Yeah.
Yeah, you will.
We're going to have attendance issues on the days that the kids are supposed to be back in school when they shouldn't be.
Yes, yes.
It's always a problem.
Yes, yes. All right, I'll work up another variation on this theme, and have a chance to talk to not only my administrators, but also the, the bargaining unit reps, and say, hey, based on what we've experienced this year, this, we think this is a safer way to go.
Wiser, yeah.
I'm fine, I'm fine with that, I'm not, I'm not fighting it, I just want to get the best calendar we can out of those things, so. Okay?
Okay.
So, yeah, so did we table it?
We tabled it, it's all tabled.
Did you vote?
Fully tabled, we voted, we tabled.
It helps me a lot better.
It's been tabled.
Okay.